I'll call to order the Caroline County Board of Supervisors meeting for May 11th. All board members are present from Madison to my far right is Mr. Clay Forehand. Next to him from Western Carolina is Jeff Black. To my right is Mr. Jeff Sealy from Bowling Green. To my left, Ms. Nancy Long from Port Royal. To my far left is Mr. Floyd Thomas from Mattapani. And I'm Reggie Underwood from Reedy Church District. Can we now all stand for invocation? Eternal God, our Father, once again, we come before you. Give me your thanks for another day that you blessed and spared our lives. Heavenly Father, we give thanks on this special day for allowing us to acknowledge our first responders. For they truly answered the bell every time the bell rang. Giving service to our community selfless. Heavenly Father, tonight we give thanks and ask you to put us on one accord. Bless those in attendance. Give us strength and guidance as we continue to do the work of the county. These are all blessings, I ask in your precious name. Amen. At this time, we'll do opening board comments. Mr. Forehand?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Black?
Yeah, I have a few. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, not that social media is overly a... Sometimes with, with social media, you can, there's good and bad with it. And there is a, kind of a Facebook group, that's Caroline County residents. And there's a couple pieces of information that were on in the last couple of days that I... I'd like to reiterate to counties, our staff as well, just because it's kind of the citizens, I think voicing their concerns, and I think they're legitimate. The first post was a post from someone talking about the trash again, and I know I harp on this over and over again. But the trash, and I was trying to find it here just a couple minutes ago, but it was Citizen Signboard Road and Page Road and Ladysmith Road and Poo Water Drive. So it was not just in one section of the country, it was county, it was all over. And I think, Mr. Chairman, that's something that we're, we're gonna have to try to wrap our heads around and figure out, because this was probably forty or fifty comments about how bad some of the sides of the roads looked. And I think that Mr. Sheeble is doing everything and possibly in his arsenal that he can do. But I think that we need to try to figure out what we can do more, because the citizens don't like the county looking like a landfill. So the next thing, and Mr. Forehand kind of commented on this yesterday, the company Chick-fil-A actually put out a survey about where they should go next. And there was, as of, I don't know, Mr. Forehand, as of, I don't know, yesterday after a couple hours, I think there was three hundred or four hundred comments on it. And Caroline was an overwhelming, I'd probably say sixty or seventy percent of the people who were responding said it was something that was desperately needed in the, in Caroline County. And they had put out ten locations where they would like to go next, relocate. So, Mr. Wilson, anything we could pin, I don't know if Mr. Wilson is here, Mr. Wilson is here, yeah? If we could ping them again, because that was the company that put out that survey. And they listed ten locations from Locust Grove to the Northern Neck to Spotsylvania Courthouse. So, and, you know, the Ladysmith area and Caroline County in general was, was in that mix. So it would be nice to, it would be, it would be nice to see if we could get that. That would be a huge, huge win for the county, because that's one of the most popular fast food restaurants in the, in the country. Finally, we just had a ceremony in regards to the fire and rescue. And it would be remiss if I didn't say that, I know Mr. Cully had thanked me at the beginning of the, of the ceremony about bringing that to the board. The reality behind that is there was a, there was an individual that actually brought it to me. There was a volunteer firefighter who had passed away. And there was an individual that was close with that volunteer firefighter who came up with the idea, it was the genesis behind the memorial. So I think it would be remiss not to mention that Kara Taylor was, without her, she worked tirelessly along with people in that committee to, to make that memorial happen. And Ms. Long had mentioned out there that I think it's, it's, it's a beautiful memorial, might be the most beautiful memorial we have in the county. So I can't thank her enough, even though, yes, it was brought to the board. It was her hard work that ended up bringing this to us. So that's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one at this time, and I'd like to, I was going in the hardware store on Saturday and was stopped by a couple of folks that asked me what lawn care service we used for the courthouse lawn and the court, and the court, and the county admin building. They said, "Who has that contract?" And I said, "That is our Public Works Department that takes care of that." And I just want to give them a great big thanks, because the courthouse lawn and the county admin building lawn look absolutely fabulous. And I've noticed the sheriff's office lawn has come a long ways too. And I, sometimes I don't think people realize who, who those folks are. But I'd like to thank Billy Holland and his whole crew that take care of that, because people do notice and they did stop me to comment. So I just thought I would pass that along this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Sealy. Ms. Long?
I just have a couple of things. First, I want to thank the community that put the dedication together. It's nice to see that beautiful monument actually noted. And I'm looking forward to, I assume we will have our September event there in September. I also wanted to comment on the trash. You know, there are a lot of people that live in this county and we all drive those roads. Sheriff only has so many eyes. You see somebody throws something out, grab the tag. You see a letter or baggage trash and there's a letter there with the address, let the sheriff know. Our Public Works cannot keep track of all the miles and miles of roadage we have, road front we have in this county. Adopt a highway, be proactive. It's gonna take all of us to keep Caroline County at its premium beauty. Can't do it just with taxpayers' money in one department. So please encourage, you know, everyone. If you drive around with children, keep a trash bag in your car for them to put those cups in and those paper napkins in. Don't let them toss it out the window. And then, as far as staff goes, I was wondering, Mr. Chair, the cigarette tax. I've been asked a couple of times if Caroline County is going to, to research that and consider it. And so I said I would ask that it could put on an agenda or we could get a report on it. Thank you.
I'll ask staff to do that. Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Long. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, it was a very nice event. We had to dedicate the monument to our first responders. And, and we all know they do a great job and we really appreciate the job they do. Also, I need to say thank you to Mr. Sheeble and Mr. Lambert, Mrs. Hall. Those are folks that do work behind the scenes. A lot of our county folks do work behind the scenes and don't, don't really get credit or, you know, a shout out that they need to get. So I wanted to thank them. I did want to thank Chief Loftus, I saw him before. He's back in the back of Major Moser for attending. One from Fire and Rescue and one from the Sheriff's Office. So it is great that those folks were there. We had quite a few first responders there too. And luckily, there wasn't an emergency where they all had to leave, so they got a chance to enjoy it. But I think that was a great event. My other comment is a couple of things about the same thing. I've been working with the Health Department for the, bless you, COVID vaccines, vaccine testing or COVID testing and things for quite some time. And we're getting to the point where we moved to the bizarre site last week. But due to bad weather, they, they relocated that here at the last minute. But we only had eighty registrants out of two hundred shots, I believe, we had. And there is, right now, for another forty-five minutes, there is a vaccination being done at Salem Baptist Church. I asked the chief this afternoon if he could send out another alert. We have nine people registered for that. So we need to either do more publicity, more, more focus and make sure we get folks there. Just to let you know, I've worked with PACS Urgent Care and they are now doing shots by appointment. So if anybody wants to walk in, they can use PACS, which is located in the Belmont subdivision. I think that's it for me now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I only have two comments. After our last board meeting, I discussed the spring holiday, half a day for employees on Good Friday. I had a few phone calls from some of the people who asked me about that holiday. And they were a little disappointed that we didn't really can take a hard look at that. And I told them we'd come back and we would revisit that. And we talked about it costing us thirty thousand dollars to give employees four hours off on Good Friday or let it be a floating holiday. And they, and we said one of the issues was cost. But as they mentioned to me in the same breath, we said we would, hey, why don't we spend the hundred ninety-three thousand dollars being saved from debt refinance? So I just want to remind us that people are looking and listening to what we say. And we can't very well speak out of both sides of our mouth and say on one issue that thirty thousand dollars is too much to give. Allow county employees to have the option of having four hours off on Good Friday or having it as a holiday, a floating holiday for those employees. And then turn around and say, "Oh yeah, we can spend that one ninety-three without, without any issue." Just, I think we need to make sure that our actions speak louder than our words. And finally, I do agree with my colleagues regarding the, the trash issue. And I kind of think about it as I drive through the county. And really, no, this is an issue that our residents, the residents of Caroline County are causing this issue. The people who are visiting our fast foods and other places in the county, they're not driving down Signboard Road and down Gregory Road and some of our major thoroughways. This is our citizens. And we have to continue to push our citizens to do a better job to keep our county beautiful. One thing about Caroline, I told you, is one of the last rules, the bastions along I-95. One of the very nice places that's not overly congested. So we need to continue and maybe we need to redouble our efforts now that COVID is, is waning as we begin to have our constituent meetings. Maybe that's something that we really need to talk about more is, how do we keep our county looking beautiful in the face of all the litter that we see along our highways? Because it is us, the residents, who are causing this problem. And we have the answer, as Ms. Long said, Public Works can't do that, Mr. Sheeble can't solve this. But we, the people, we can solve this issue. So those are my comments. Thank you. I didn't mean to put the lights out. No. Thank you. All right, next on the, any amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one amendment to the agenda, if I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Thomas?
I have a request for an expedited public hearing that I'd like the board to act on, if we could.
Okay, can we put that under new business as five A?
How about one A, since we're gonna have a lot to do before seven-thirty break?
You want to, oh, do one A? Okay.
If that's okay with you. You can make it five A, but...
You mean under present, I thought we'd do it under new business?
Five A, yeah. Five A is good, I'm just gonna ask when we get done to move it up, so that...
Is that something we can put in consent agenda?
Consent is fine with me. If that's the, I think most of the board would like to see two very large businesses come to the county.
I think that belongs in consent, so we can get that out of the way.
Put it on consent, if that's the will of the board.
That's regarding our, this addendum here?
Yes.
Yeah, consent's great.
If it's the will of the board...
I'd, I'd move that we add an, an agenda item for expedited public hearing to the consent agenda, if we could.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I have one addition I'd like to make.
Okay, so let me put this down, so the, okay, this would be...
Agenda item number I?
Agenda item I would be the...
Expedited, expedited, public hearing?
Public hearing.
Do I, I don't think I need more information, but the location is in the documents.
All board members comfortable with that change?
Well, we're gonna vote on it in a minute.
In a minute, right. Mr. Sealy?
I would like to add under new business, just a discussion on fuel in case there's a complete loss in, in reference to county functions and what we'll do. So I think it'd be a discussion, we need, Mr. Cully, fuel, fuel.
Can we make that eight A, Mr. Sealy?
I'm good with that, Mr. Chairman.
Discussing a rising fuel, fuel cost?
And the lack of.
Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have two amendments to the agenda. Item number two I, which is an expedited hearing regarding the proposal for an economic, for the expedited public hearing. And then Mr. Sealy would like to talk about agenda item eight A, which is a lack of fuel funding. If I can get a motion to approve the agenda, we'll move on.
Second?
There's a motion to approve the amended agenda. And second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? The agenda is adopted as amended. Next on the agenda is, under presentations and report, is the recognition of one of our local servants. I won't say too much at this time. Here with us for this resolution, for Ms. Erin Southworth, it's a congratulations. But before we do that, I think we have Commander William Rooney from American Legion Memorial Post 221 would like to come forth and give some remarks regarding Ms. Southworth.
I want to thank the board to allow me to be able to speak today about something that is very important to the American Legion. Every year, every one of the two-hundred-and-eight posts throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia, or as we call it, the Department of Virginia, is authorized and eligible to submit for their consideration at the, at the head of the department to award the firefighter slash EMT of the Year Award. Only one award. And they can have one, one submission or two-hundred-and-eight submissions. And the number is kept secret, so nobody knows exactly how many are awarded. The award itself is rather complicated in that they have strict guidelines as far as the volume of paper. Like they can only have twenty pieces of paper, one-sided, certain fonts. The narrative, it can only be so much, on and on and on. So it's, there's a lot of, there's not a lot of room for embellishment. If you have certificates and diplomas and add, add a boys, add a girls in it, that's fine too. But it's strictly very, very limited. And the board that they have has a very, very long experience that reviews this. They're sort of the best of the bunch that we have at the state level. And so they're very much familiar with law enforcement and with firefighting as far as the means to the end. So they always look at that. It's an honor to be here today, because our post managed to, with a lot of effort and cooperation from the Caroline County Fire and Rescue Department, were able to put together a package that was unbelievable. When I, when I received it and I went through it, my, my view was, wow, if we don't win, something's wrong. It was just overwhelming. And I didn't recognize the name at first, because, even though it had a photograph in it. But I actually knew Erin, excuse me, yeah, Erin, a couple, couple of years ago. But I was wearing a different hat, it was with the VFW. And we were doing community service projects. So she's not an unfamiliar face to me. The award itself is awarded at the state convention, which is gonna be held on July tenth. And they're still trying to work out details of it as far as COVID and whether or not it's gonna be virtual or in, in person. And I really hope that it's gonna be awarded in person. And it's, and it's, it's not just an award for her, it's an award for the entire community. It's an award for the recognition and of the dedication and service of all the, all the public service members and the work they do every day in and day out. Silent and not a lot of notoriety and anything else. But it's, it's something that, from the American Legion standpoint, is emblematic of what we stand for as far as devotion to country, to community, and making sure that everybody respects the flag and, and respects those that defend it. So without any more further ado... Anybody else have anything to say? I do have this certificate, the letter that I received, if I could read that, or you, you could read it?
Mr. Rooney, you can go ahead and read it, because I have a resolution that I'm gonna read as well.
Okay.
But, but since the committee selected, I would give you the honor of reading that certificate and then I'll do the resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
It's, it's addressed to me, Commander. It is my pleasure to officially notify you that the firefighter slash EMT nominated by Caroline County Memorial Post 221, Captain Erin R. Southworth, was recently selected as the firefighter slash EMT of the year by the Law and Order Subcommittee of the Department of Virginia. Captain Southworth was selected for this special recognition because of her record of outstanding performance in her profession and support to her community. Congratulations to Post 221, to the Caroline County Department of Fire and Rescue and to, and to Captain Southworth. Then, then it goes on, it's talk about is, in a tradition of the department's firefighter slash EMT of the year award, it will be formally recognized during the Department of Virginia's annual convention, which normally convenes in mid-September. And then they talk about precautions and so, so, so forth. So Post 221 will do all the coordination between the state and the captain here to make sure that everybody is looking good and shows up and all the, all the appropriate ceremonies are being conducted. And once again, it's gonna happen on the tenth of July and it's gonna be a great event.
I'm done. Thank you, Commander Rooney. I just want those in the audience to hear, this is the EMT firefighter of the year. That, that is just, within itself, a great honor. And the Board of Supervisors is honored to present this resolution to Erin, to you and your family. And I'll read that if you want to come forward to the podium, I'll read the resolution. This is the resolution congratulating Captain Erin R. Southworth for being selected as the firefighter of the year by the Law and Order Subcommittee, the American Legion Department of Virginia. Whereas Captain Erin R. Southworth has faithfully served Caroline County Department of Fire and Rescue since nineteen ninety-five, when she began her career as a dispatcher. Whereas during the time she began taking courses in fire and emergency medical response in nineteen seventy-seven, became, in nineteen ninety-seven, excuse me, became a full-time EMT firefighter with the Caroline County Department of Fire and Rescue. And whereas in September twenty oh eight, she was promoted to lieutenant. In October twenty nineteen, was again promoted to fire EMS captain. And whereas in recognition of her knowledge, skills in performing her duties, Captain Southworth was nominated by the Caroline County American Legion Memorial Post 221 and selected as firefighter, firefighter EMT of the year by the Law and Order Subcommittee of the American Legion Department of Virginia. And whereas Captain Southworth was selected for this special recognition due to her record of outstanding performance in her professional and support to her community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby congratulate Captain Erin R. Southworth for being named American Legion Department of Virginia firefighter, EMT of the year. Commends her for a job well done and thanks her for her dedicated service to the citizens of Caroline County. Adopted this day, eleventh day of May, signed by Mr. Charles Cully and Reggie Underwood, Chairman of the Board. Ms. Southworth? The mic is, mic is yours, Ms. Southworth.
Thank you very much. It means a lot to me, both from Caroline County Government and from the American Legion Post. It really does mean a lot. I know that this is only because God has placed me in the career that I was called to be in and that He has put me where I need to be in life. And I really appreciate the support of the county and of my family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just don't get out of the distance. That's what's saying.
Oh no, those lights are actually okay. It's like too bright, too not.
Say one more, we're good.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Board members would like to just add one thing to the agenda. Dr. O from the Virginia Department of Health is here. And Doc, would you kind of come up, maybe just introduce yourself to the board? And maybe I'll give you a couple of minutes, how about that, good Doc?
That works.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ulubenga Obasango. Dr. O is fine, Benga is better. Call me whatever you like, just don't call me late for lunch. I'm a public health physician, trained at Johns Hopkins. Last seven years I've been in Virginia as a health director. But prior to that, I was, for two years I was working in Prince William Health District as a public health physician. So I'm familiar with this, this area and I'm glad to be back, back in the mid-Atlantic and back in Northern Virginia. In, in response to what you were talking about, Ms. Thomas, about the COVID vaccine. In all our sites, we're taking walk-ins now. The numbers of, in, for all our registration sites have crashed. So we're doing walk-ins everywhere, anywhere the public health is, is open. Anybody can go in, first shot, second shot. Additionally, what we're, what we're, we're, we're going to start doing with the support of the state and we'll be reaching out to you is we want to do some micro-targeting, the hard-to-reach places. And the state is helping us to actually identify using data per zip code, how many, how much of the population has actually been vaccinated. So we're actually going to micro-target, once we've identified zip codes where the uptake is, is below what we, what we like, we'll reach out to you for how we can target those places. Because we can't, we're not just going to take the vaccines there and just stand on the street. You're going to help us identify, okay, this, this is where we need to go and then help us with the marketing. The other thing I wanted to mention about COVID is you may have heard in the news yesterday, or this morning, late yesterday, that the Pfizer vaccine has gotten an EUA for the 12 to 15-year-olds, which means middle school, high school. We had, we had calls, two calls today, one with the state and one with the district with superintendents to try to get at least the first shot into, for the high schoolers and middle schoolers before the close of school, the school this year. We, we, I think we will be able to get the first shot. The second shot will probably have to work with the local pediatricians and the pharmacies to get those in. But that, again, we'll be reaching out to you, the superintendents will be reaching out to you. And you'll be hearing, you know, we have to get parents' permission and all that, all that, all that kind of thing. So you'll be hearing about that. The other thing that I have, I, I, since we're in the COVID season, our numbers are going down. As a district, our positivity rate now is about 7.1% for PCRs, about 7.7% for antigens. Statewide, it's down to 4%, which is good. At the vaccine, total vaccination, fully vaccinated in the state is now is 39%. And I forget how many, how much it is for just partly vaccinated. To get to 70% vaccination rate, we need about 600,000 more Virginians vaccinated. To get, and, and for the 12 to 14-year-olds in our district, in the state, they're about 400,000. So if we're able to vaccinate most of them, we are already beginning to approach 70%, which 70 to 80% is where we think herd immunity will be. So we're, we're, we're getting there, but we just, we just need that little extra push. And while we're doing that extra push, we have to keep up with the masking, the social distancing for just a little more time. The, the last thing we need is any of the stuff that's, you know, going on in India or some of the stuff going on in Brazil or South Africa to get to us. And we, either we don't have a population that's vaccinated or they're partially vaccinated or we haven't protected ourselves enough. So that's the point I just wanted to, to put out in regards to COVID. And as I introduced myself and the hope to have a long fruitful career with you, thank you for having me.
Well, Dr. Benga, thank you for coming, thank you for updating us. And here certainly the board, if there's anything that we can do, please let us know. We certainly want to reach that 70%. We will do all we can to get out into the community to make sure that those pockets that are having difficulty getting to vaccination sites, we certainly will do all we can to make this happen.
Once we have that data, I will share it with, with you through the Health Department so that you can, you will be able to look at those zip codes that have less than ideal uptake of vaccines. And then you'll be able to advise us on how we can move forward.
Thank you, sir. Any board members have any comments? Any, all right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the, we've added an expedited public hearing to the public agenda. But if, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda if we all agree.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, to approve the consent agenda as modified, second.
There's a motion by Mr. Sealy, a second by Ms. Black, Mrs. Long, excuse me, that we approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Oh, let's see here, Jeff, you want to, can we take care of 8A real quick?
Absolutely.
Since we, since we have a little time, I'm just going to take item 8A on the agenda. A discussion of the lack of fuel that's, because of the Colonial Pipeline issue. And we just move that to the next item. Mr. Cully and Mr. Sealy.
Well, as you're well aware from the news and/or if you've been riding around the county, there is a real issue with all fuels, diesel fuel and gasoline. And of course, right much of everything we do, we burn in a fair amount of diesel. The schools obviously burn a fair amount of diesel for the school buses. Our trash trucks, you know, basically burn a tank out of diesel a day. And obviously fire and rescue, everything for the most part, that's moving ambulances and fire trucks are diesel. So we've, we've all been working today to find sources, to implement some procedures to try to conserve and work together. But what I would like is maybe some flexibility if it gets worse before it gets better, especially at the trash sites. If I can't move it because I don't have fuel, like it's going to be hard to be open and have it, you know, on the ground when we, you know, when the boxes fill up. So I, some flexibility maybe to, to limit some hours or shut down if we really start running into a fuel crunch. And we really don't know, I mean, I don't know how much you follow this, but this pipeline in its entirety has never been shut down before. So I don't know that anybody really knows exactly how long it's going to take to ramp back up and actually have fuel flowing out to all of the places. And while there are other sources in Virginia, everybody's sort of panic buying. You remember last year when the COVID hit, you couldn't buy toilet paper? And it really was, you know, everybody was panic buying and, and it took a long time for that to ever recover. I don't think this would be that bad, but I am a little bit concerned that we've never dealt with something like this. We've dealt with refinery issues and hurricanes and storms doing disruptions to service. But this, this pipeline, I, I looked up the number, was it 100, how many, 100 million gallons a day? It was 100 million gallons a day that flowed through this line. And not all of that's coming to Virginia, obviously. But it's clearly, for some reason, has hit Virginia the worst. We have the most stations reporting out of fuel, a little bit more than even North Carolina. So that's just what we're looking for, some flexibility. We're not going to do anything that we don't have to do, but we may have to do some things to, just because we are struggling both. And I may have some issues with employees being able to get to work if they can't personally buy gas. While we have some fuel stored in some places to get fuel, a lot of people may be running out of it in their, their personal cars. And so we may have to go back to some remote working or work from home or shift work or those type of things as well to, you know, with, because we just don't know. And I have some people that drive a fair amount of distance to get to work.
Right, I guess my first question, and I'll get the board, is, is this for all, is it for all fuel, including diesel?
It is diesel, yes.
So it's all fuel?
All fuel, yeah. Even aviation fuel is evidently, some aviation fuel is moved in that pipeline too, from what I read. So it is diesel. Because that's when I talked to Dr. Calvert earlier, I thought it was just gasoline until I looked into it. No, it is diesel because they are, they are, they are also very worried about being able to keep school buses. And I know Mr. Chief Loftus is working with them to try to get fuel for them. We just haven't gotten all that worked out yet. But we hope to be able to keep the buses going because they're doing testing this week.
Mr. Sealy, you comment?
No, Mr. Chairman, I was talking to, I've talked to Chief Loftus and I talked to the Sheriff's Office this afternoon. I went out to actually get diesel fuel and there was one place that had it. Every place else was, was fairly lined up. And the gas station is, as we were, I was coming here this evening, were also had lines. So it's going to be, and it's not just for the trucks, it's employees as well. It is, it is something that we all take for granted. It's been the 70s since we had the, I was, I was 14 or 15 years old when we had the gas lines odd even and all those kinds of things. So this is a new sort of event for us. So in the event, I just wanted to bring it up as a topic tonight, just because we're all here this evening. And it's an opportunity, Mr. Cully, to talk to us and for us to at least hear what the potentials are and what we may need to do instead of being reactive Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, we can be proactive tonight and at least be aware of the problem and lay out some sort of process.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mr. Thomas?
We do have a storage facility for diesel, don't we?
In the county?
Don't we store some diesel somewhere?
Remember the regs changed in.
We may have, but not that I'm aware since I've been here.
But the schools have the storage facility for these. No, they just buy, they just buy.
They're, they're using stations that are, remember the regs changed in the early, in the, in the mid 90s for storage and the groundwater contamination monitoring. So almost everybody got rid of storage at that point in time.
Good evening. Our vendor is Shell Stations here within Caroline County. We have reached out to other providers to determine their availability to service schools, but they too have a low supply or they have already closed. We reached out to VDOT and that is when we reached out to Chief Loftus. He has graciously indicated that if we could provide him with data, which we have already done so via email, where we utilize 34,000 gallons a week to outfit our fleet, that he would submit that data to, and did I say 34,000 or 3,400? Thank you, I'm glad I just, I saw your facial expressions and that made me question whether or not I said that correctly. Let me correct myself for a second time. 3,400 gallons of diesel and some gasoline to outfit our fleet. So he will be submitting that data to the state and hopefully, because we are under a state of emergency, as stated by the governor this morning, we will be able to receive an emergency shipment. We do feel confident because we planned to fill all of our vehicles that we can run school through Friday that is transporting students. The caveat is, will staff be able to be present? Will they be able to access gas? So we are in Plan B, C and D mode, just like the county.
Thank you, Dr. Calvert.
There were lines at that Shell Station that came.
Any other board members have any, any questions?
I can give one, Anne. We do have 3,500 gallons, not in one place, in fire and rescue, at different stations.
Capacity for storage?
Yes, we have it. So we, we're not, we're not.
Capacity for storage, 3,500.
Yeah, we, we have 3,500. We have 3,500 gallons. Not just, not just the capacity, we have it, but, you know, I don't know what a fire truck gets, but you can imagine it doesn't get a whole lot in all of our ambulances. It could go, you know, out of the county for every, every trip. So we can burn a fair amount of, you know, diesel, you know, if we have to go long-term. But anyway, we're just making plans on that to make sure we can, what I don't have capacity of and we're trying to make sure we do is for trash trucks, which are not emergency vehicles, but yet it is a service that, you know, that.
It's a public health.
It's a public health thing. So we may have to figure out a way to keep some of it running, you know, and we run those trucks seven days a week. So it is still.
Can we use this new COVID money for gas? Well, there's no gas available.
No. It's not like it's available.
Yeah, that's the problem.
I'm just wondering if we can.
How about an above-ground storage tank? How about an above-ground storage tank?
That comes with all kinds of new state regs, which is why when I was on the school board, we actually limited our storage capacity.
I mean, above-ground is the, is the way to go, even gas stations are going above-ground.
I know, but they still got all this containment and things you have to put in. We, I had one in an airport in Middlesex and so it's.
So the reality of it is, we need to be conservative. We need to keep it in mind, we need to be flexible and number, should we need to make changes for employees as well as.
Operations.
Operations to make sure we continue to operate effectively.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Do you need action from us, Mr. Cully?
I don't think it needs, I mean, well.
Delete, give you some.
Some authority to, to shift hours around or do things to, to, to get through this shortage.
So, Mr. Cully, so is there anything that you would need from the board other than our understanding and flexibility in the way to let you, allow you to do what you need to do to make sure that you have full oversight over the issue? You're just giving us information.
Some of, some of the hours and things are probably board adopted, it just don't.
Yeah, trash, the trash facilities have adopted.
We normally close for snow and things like that. So this would be a weird closing, but it would be an emergency closing. It, just an authorization to make emergency closures as needed due to the shortage of fuel.
So I would, I would ask, okay.
Nancy made a motion on your emergency.
Nancy, so the motion is that we authorize, Mr. Cully, given the authorization to make necessary adjustments as the gas shortage presents itself.
As an emergency.
As an emergency situation.
I'll second that.
And there's a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Cully, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Thanks, yeah, thank you, Mr. Sealy. Want to do number six, we can do the VDOT six-year plan, road plan. Are we prepared for that?
Yeah, where's, I was surprised, I guess they're agenda item number five.
Yeah, they're number five, I don't know, they probably will come back after the public hearing. That's, so that's what we kind of told them. Can we go ahead and do item number, at the board's approval, we can go ahead and do item number six. Discuss the six-year road plan. It's in your packet, I believe.
Yep.
Mr. Fincham?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your next item is the Caroline County's six-year secondary road plan for FY 22 through 27. For those of you who have been on the board for a while, you will recognize that the, the size of the six-year plan has been reduced to one-page commensurate with the funding available for secondary roads in Caroline County. The, the plan used to be much more voluminous than this. In this plan, there basically are two sources of funding for any road, secondary road improvements in Caroline County. Those would be telecommunications funds that are collected through the Commonwealth of Virginia, which are then allocated to the three categories that are shown as category or priorities three, four and five. The second funding source is a designated funding source from the Commonwealth of Virginia for unpaid road funds, which used to be a category called secondary road fund. for unpaved road funds, which used to be a category called secondary road funds. So those basically are the two funding sources that we have to do anything related to the secondary roads in Caroline County. It's from these funding sources that any unpaved roads that, that are to be paved are covered by the funds in category six. Any rural additions or other additions to the secondary road system or improvements come from these funds as well. Your first two categories are the, what have been identified so far as candidate projects for rural additions or secondary road improvements in this plan. The first one would be the upgrade to Shepherd Hill Road, which is just outside the town of Bowling Green, for inclusion in the secondary road system. And the second improvement was one identified about a year ago, which would be an improvement to the intersection of Farmer Drive and Fredericksburg Turnpike. The funding from those, for those two projects actually came from savings in, in the current and previous fiscal years of the secondary road plan, which is how, if, if you identify other improvements that you would like staff and VDOT to look at, that's what we would do. We would look to any savings in categories three through five and, and allocate those, those savings in future six-year plans for any projects that you might identify as candidate projects for future or for out years. You have authorized a public hearing on the six-year plan at your May 25 meeting. VDOT will be present that night to address any questions you have. And if you have any questions tonight or between tonight and the public hearing and get those to me, I will make sure that we discuss those with VDOT.
Chair? Board, have any questions?
I have, I have
Mr. Wong?
Mr. Fincham, on the second road down for the Farmer's Drive, we have 43,000 and then it goes down to 275,581. Where are we getting, is the extra money from savings? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. In this case, there was 6,000 that was removed from the countywide engineering and survey and moved up to the Route Two Farmer Drive improvement. So roughly 6,000 to, to make that total 50,000 was, will be moved in the current or budget year to, to, to make that project whole.
So where's the 275,581?
The, the total.
It does
The total amount
Total that they have?
That will be the, the total funds available at the end of that period. So across the, the six-year timeframe, that's the total funds that are estimated to be available.
Okay. And we have requested, and I thought it came through something on smart scale or, or through VDOT, for a complete safety study on Route Two. Particularly, we did point out that Farmer Drive was an accident-prone area and to have that study. That was a long time ago. Has that even been touched and where does that come in at?
I raised that issue with Richard Spurlock, who's my contact at VDOT for this program. He indicated that the Commonwealth is going to modify its revenue sharing program and that that study would, would likely qualify for a revenue sharing project between VDOT and Caroline County. So we are getting the information on that so that we can make application for the next round of, of revenue sharing.
So it hasn't started yet?
It has not started, no ma'am.
And then real quick, just tell me the, the last three bars here, the engineering survey, traffic services, that's all a different type of funding?
Yes and no. Back when they set up the, the accounts for the secondary roads, they created these different line item categories. In reality, they're interchangeable. If you need funds from, from, you know, from, from one category to be moved to another, they're readily interchangeable.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I just couldn't understand those, those bars where we were at. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of, one of the things I would just like to emphasize is that in our, in our goals or, or our lobbying events, we actually asked to, to have secondary roads from the General Assembly to look at. And I think we're running into the reason why we need secondary roads. I mean, this is a single page. This used to be, Mr. Thomas, five or six pages. And we had a number of projects. And, and it's, it's not like we don't have projects that need to be done. We're just, we're just, we're not even looking at the big picture of what else needs to be done. We're not looking at ditches, we're not looking at, at, at berms being replaced. We're not looking at any of those kinds of things that all come out of the same fund. So I, I think we need to actually, as the year goes, as we go through this year, is get ready for December and be able to send a list of real highway issues to the General Assembly through the, the folks that do lobbying for us. Because other board members that I've talked to around the, around the state have the same issue. And again, with, with Mr. Black, with the, with the George Washington Regional Commission and FAMPO, looking at secondary roads has really been an issue and it's, it's going to get to be a larger issue. We've had a big building boom. Every lot that was available in all the rural places in the county have been bought. Yeah, lumber prices are high, but there's still being houses built and we're going to add traffic to those and it's going to add to the cost of just those secondary roads and the wear and tear on them. So I, I would just say that we need to make that robust list as we move towards December so that we can roll that over into the General Assembly in the next session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Thank you, Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Chairman, could I add something to that? Because I, I think our focus is really on the maintenance funds. Because maintenance funds is where we actually repair the ditches, which leads to road erosion and deterioration. So how we lobby for increased maintenance fund budget is really the key. Because these are, these are all small roads and they take years for them to get done anyhow. But the time we lose because our ditches are
Not pulled.
Not pulled and, and roads are being flooded and things of that nature, it costs a lot more in the long run. So that's where our focus needs to really be.
Yep. Well done. Yeah, well said. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Board, what I'd like to do, I'd like to go ahead and go in closed session and take care of closed session and then come back at 7:30 and do public comment. Mr. Black, do you have the motion for closed con, closed session?
I move that this board convene in closed meeting pursuant to the personnel exemption of Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss an amendment to the employment contract of the county administrator and Section 2.23711A3 to discuss the potential disposition of real property where discussion in open meeting could adversely affect the bargaining position of the county.
Second?
There's the motion proper second. We go into closed session, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session.
The opening, open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed or considered by the board.
Mr. Forehand, you so certify?
Yeah, I so certify.
Mr. Black, you so certify?
So certify.
Mr. Seale, you so certify?
Mr. Chairman, I so certify.
Ms. Long, you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas, you so certify?
So certify.
And I so certify as well. Next on our, next on the agenda is our public comment. Public comment is a period for citizens is for the purpose to speak to the board regarding any matter that's not on the agenda. Public comment will give us a citizen opportunity for three minutes to speak on any matter. Remarks should be addressed to the board, not to the staff. Mark should be addressed to the board, not to the staff. Comments on any matters of Caroline County and not individual matters. At this time, public comment is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public comment? If so, please come forwards, state your name and your magisterial, voting magisterial district.
Good evening, Chair Underwood, Vice Chair Black, and members of the board. My name is Nancy Carson, resident of the Mattapanah District and Vice Chair of the School Board. Collaboration and communication between the Board of Supervisors and School Board are essential for the growth and development of Caroline County and the school division. As the largest employer in the county who is charged with the academic and social emotional wellness of our most valuable resource, students, CCPS believes that regularly scheduled two by two, which I know you all are not crazy about, and joint board workshop meetings are essential for information sharing, sound physical stewardship, and problem solving. The Board of Supervisors Chair recent request to cancel the scheduled July joint board meeting is disheartening and could be interpreted by CCPS staff and the community as local elected officials disinterest in and disengagement from Caroline County public schools. We are hopeful that this is an inaccurate reality and that the resulting six-month gap in meeting March to September is not an indication of K-12 apathy. It is our sincere hope that the Board of Supervisors would be eager to receive updates associated with FY 21 and FY 22 budget matters, broadband development, summer learning programs, faculty projects related to reversion funds, salary progression, alignment of county and CCPS strategic plans, and the reopening of the school after a year-long pandemic. We urge you to reconsider the cancellation of the July joint board meeting so we can work together for the betterment of the school division and Caroline community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carson. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment?
My name is Dr. Joanna Rollins Fels from the Reedy Church District, and for my public comment this evening, I have two. I am here as the Chair of the CCPS School Board with a request again for this board to reconsider us having our joint board meeting. As was stated by our Vice Chair, Ms. Carson, we are the largest operation in the county. Our practices influence over 4,000 students, and as we've been operating in a pandemic, there have been a lot of decisions that are made with several different funding sources and different dynamics and nuances. What we have learned in the past is that communication and collaboration is key, and some of the things, just to reiterate, that we are hoping to have a joint conversation about is the development of broadband. As we all know, the internet and broadband and infrastructure is of key importance to all of our citizens, but of major importance to education. We have summer learning programs that will be up and running. We have some facility projects that we are working on with you all, and I think the updates and the status on those projects would be important. We also want to look at the strategic plan. So as you all know, our pathways 2022 is coming to a close. We will be beginning our process of our next strategic plan, and from a governance standpoint, it would be very beneficial that we look and work together with the county with the county strategic plan as well. We want to make sure that we are represented, that we are all working together, moving forward in the same path. So I am asking again that this board would reconsider not canceling the July joint board meeting. As you can see, the topics that we have planned to discuss are timely, they are important, and they are relevant. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Last time, is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Agenda item number three, we go on to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. Mr. Finchem, I believe you're going to handle both, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your first public hearing tonight is Commonwealth Fairs and Events, AKA Virginia Farm Bureau Holding Corporation Incorporated owner, Meadow Event Park applicant, requesting amendment to the existing proffers for the planned recreation and entertainment district consisting of 358.8 acres more or less on tax maps 100- A-1A, 100- A-1A1, 100- A-1A2, 100- A-2, and 100A-3, and 101- A-100B. The property is located at 13,191 Dawn Boulevard, the Meadow Event Park in the Reedy Church Voting District. The proposed request is to amend the proffers associated with RZ 02-2014, including but not limited to amendments to modify requirements regarding security, submittal of security and operations plans, amending uses that are not allowed, site development and design, solid waste, transportation, and public safety. The proposed modifications would allow more expansive use of the facility. The applicant is requesting amendment to the proffers associated with RZ 02-2014, which would include changes to the owner's name from Commonwealth Fairs and Events Incorporated to the Virginia Farm Bureau Holding Corporation Incorporated. Along with the name change, the Virginia Farm Bureau Holding Corporation has requested changes to the proffers associated with the current Meadow Event Park. A copy of the amended proffers as requested by the applicant is included in the packet under attachment A. An overview of the requested changes is also included in your staff report, which was an attempt to summarize the requested changes from Meadow Event Park. Staff will not go over those in detail, but if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those. The Planning Commission held its public hearing on this request at its March 25th meeting. There was one speaker that expressed concern about traffic and poor cellphone service during events and the effects of fireworks on horses. There were also several letters submitted to the Planning Commission in opposition to the requested amendments, which are included under attachment B. The Planning Commission voted unanimously forward this request with a recommendation of approval. And the benefits of the Planning Commission meeting are included in attachment C.
It's a summary of my comments, Mr. Chairman. If you have any questions, I'll have to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Finchem. Let me go ahead and open up a public comment for my public hearing for RZ 021. 2021, and then see if we have any comments. Public hearing for RZ 01-2021, Commonwealth Fairs and Events, AKA Virginia Farm Bureau Holding Operation Owner, Meadow Event Park. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening, and thank you all very much for the chance to just, what I want to do first, because I know it was a lot of information. It's just reiterate what I summarized to the Planning Commission, and that was in late, late 2019 when things were kind of in shutdown mode, and I had been looking at this for a while to update our proffers. Part of it is administrative, as you saw, because our name did change. Secondly, I looked at this project and tried to highlight things that I felt like we're regulated in our proffers, both are regulated in a parallel fashion by state code. And then I looked at, you know, where things that were in the proffers, when the property was developed, that really aren't applicable right now to any of our operations. So my goal was just to end up with a set of proffers that really matched who we are today and how we're operating. Take out old language, but I did, you know, initiate some discussion and request changes related to a few areas that I feel we've been restricted as far as new business development primarily. Number one would be public camping that you saw in my comments. And then secondly is the process by which our promoters who use the property and how, what I go through on an annual basis to deal with business licenses and all of that and try to get some more efficient approaches to it so that when we are explaining to people how we do business at the meadow and the steps they need to go through, it's not as complicated. So that's my high-level summary of what kind of started, you know, started me down this path. And I think, as you all know, you know, we were shut down last year. Clearly, right now, we're not shut down, and things are very busy and opening faster than we can almost hang on to. As long as people have gas to get there, we'll be fine. But things are looking good. We are planning a state fair in the fall. As you all know, the concert series actually kicks off Friday of this week, and a lot is happening at the meadow, and I think any requested change that we have, you know, I did go through the proper routes, and I work pretty much every day with most of county staff on things we're doing and to make sure we're in line. And in the area of public safety that was mentioned, we're not looking to make it easier or make it any less safe. We're looking to simply update the proffers and have some of the language kind of, you know, some of it was just old. In fact, we are adding wanding to all public entry gates this year for the state fair. So as an example, that's something that we've not done and something that we're going to be doing. So I think it's important right now for me just to open up for questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Ms. Joel.
Yep.
If you would just take a seat at the front row, and I'll see if, is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed on RZ 01-2021. How does the board have any questions? Mr. Thomas?
Ms. Joel, if you would please, for a second, I lost the changes real quick. The number four was you're going to remove the requirement to advertise the county on your literature?
So the way the proffers has read has the actual, and I don't have the, well, let's see here, give me two seconds and I'll find it. So basically, it mandated that we use the, that we will advertise Caroline County and all materials promoting events on the property with input from Caroline County Department of Economic Development. So on two, from two angles, and I addressed this in a letter when I think it was raised in 2018 and talked about social media, and it simply is not possible to put it in everything we do. So I think the new language simply says where possible, but I'll share with you that we, since I came to the meadow in 2015, I can assure you that I have put the logo probably tenfold times more in materials and things that we use to market the meadow. You'll see the Meadow Event Park Caroline County logo used on a lot of our marketing materials for facility rentals and such, but it just, it's not possible to use it in every single advertisement that we do. We do a lot of 15-second television ads and that. So it's not, one of the Planning Commission members asked if, he said, I thought you were wanting a divorce from the county, and that brought a laugh, and I said, no, I just think it's important to say exactly what is possible and then work to do more than that.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, what, and what it was, as she stated, when we talked about it earlier, is to be in compliance is what, she wants to make sure that everything that you do is in compliant.
I mean, we're not.
If there's an issue, she wants to resolve it before there could be an issue. That's why she wanted the language where absolutely possible. It's been added to many of the advertisements, but again, some are just not possible.
Yeah, and that's, I just wanted to clarify that point, and that's really what my point, you're going to say, I mean, you're not saying Meadow Event Park Hanover, Virginia, which is your mailing address. You're saying Meadow Event Park, Caroline County.
Yes.
Wherever you can, and I just wanted to clarify that point. We're not, I imagine if we approve this, we're not going to go back and read everything you say and say, hey, you didn't say Caroline County, we're dinging you for that. My point was just to clarify. My other question is, and I don't know if you can tell me, but I would like you to tell me, or at least give me a really good feeling. Number nine, FG and H eliminates the prohibition on campground, which we said was no problem before because you're doing that. Hotels and motels, we had probably to our detriment a requirement that you couldn't have a hotel, and now we're going to remove that so you can have a hotel or motel.
That's what we're striking here, yes. I don't have, what I would say is, do I have, have I had a request, you know, a serious inquiry for that? Is it something that's right in the forefront that we're looking at? Honestly, no, there aren't, there's not anything on the table, but should it ever come down the road, then we would at least have the ability to explore it with economic development in the county.
I was kind of hoping you'd say, yes, there's one waiting at the door, and once we do this, you'll have a hotel. But I'm sure Mr. Wilson will work for you, work with you to see if we can get a hotel there as soon as possible.
Yeah, I think, I think it could be part of the future. I want to back up on the advertising piece and quickly mention, I am working with the economic development staff on a new welcome to the Meadow Event Park, and then the Caroline County seal will be at the gate where all of the concert goers arrive, so that, we won't have it up by Friday, but hopefully by the end of May.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other women who have any questions? Ms. Long?
Hi.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple. First of all, I really want to keep four. I don't even think, I don't understand why in a TV or a radio spot, you know, Does Park, Caroline, Virginia, you know, it's, it's less than a second. They put a lot of words in a small period of time, and it's so easy for people to get confused because the Does Well sign is an exit that you use, but that's in different counties. So I really would like to keep them coming in the right direction. So that one does bother me. I will tell you, you've done a wonderful job of doing it all along, and I really would like to keep that one. I have no problem with the campground and the hotels as long as we don't have a campground that turns into a community, which I think your regulations keep you from doing that because.
I wouldn't want that either.
The burnt ones don't want to be burned again. And then the, I have no problem with changing some of the materials, but do remember, and I will ask Mr. Finchem to clarify this, I believe there is a condition that all structures have to keep with the farm atmosphere of meadow farms as far as construction goes in their style, so that is not being affected, correct? We're still going to keep that, that fourth farm feel?
Section 18, or it's number 18.
Is it 18? I knew it was, I thought it was in here somewhere, but I just wanted to make sure that's not going to be affected.
Right, they're not changing the reference to agricultural structures and the colors of, of, of Meadow Farm. So that's still there. It's other structures.
Other structures, as far as material goes, or as far as?
Other materials, roofing materials, et cetera. Yes, there are some changes that other structures. Yes, there are some changes that other structures could be allowed, different construction materials.
Okay, different construction materials, gotcha, all right. And are the natural resource part, Mr. Fincham, we're okay there? That's a big section and in truth, I did not have time to totally understand it. Do you know, can you tell me?
I'll address that.
Crossed out?
Yes, so I, I went back. That section, if you read 36, when the property moved, when the fair was developed and they moved, obviously there are wetlands that were in the middle of what would, is now parking lots and part of the, I guess, decision was to form a committee so that that initial development of the property did not upset, bother the wetlands, create any issues. So the conservation committee, it goes back to the very beginning and really hasn't been, there's, there's been no conservation committee since the original bankruptcy and then the restart under Virginia Farm Bureau. So the way I look at that is, I mean, at, well, having our corporate owner and that oversight and also knowing that, for instance, during the state fair, the Division of Environmental or Environmental Quality, they're actually exhibitors and we have a lot of people looking at what we're going, we're doing. It's not in our best interest to, to damage anything that was agreed to in the original development of the property. And so I think it's, we've adopted an operating model that we take care of the property and of course, we're right by the river, so we have an obligation to do, use best practices with everything we do as far as how it might affect the river. But we just don't have a committee in place.
That, that makes total sense. So that's sort of one of those outdated things you were talking about.
Yes.
So that makes sense. And then I read somewhere in here something about not continuing your secretariat display.
What I, let's see, the, that was also, I think, an original part of that. We, at that point in time, we wouldn't have had our historic barns on the National Historic Register, which they are now.
Right, that's why I couldn't figure out, well, why would you not wanna do it? Because you've got those two buildings.
Well, I think what that said early on was, you know, don't get rid of these historic structures. Yeah, now we're obligated to keep the barns, take care of them, and we do have plans to continue to use them and grow the program. But the reference that was in the proppers really, to me, tied to the initial development of the property.
And plant, you're comfortable with that, Mr. Fincham? Just say yes or no? Okay. I think that, those were my, my concerns because I wasn't here when all this first started down years ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Sealy?
Would you, would you mind if we put up a welcome to Caroline sign right at the corner of the property after they come over the South River to say they're in, people are in Caroline coming from the Hanover side across the South River?
We had that discussion a year ago. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I, I think that might also help. And I don't mean a ti, I mean, a sign that's, I don't mean a billboard and I don't mean something gaudy, but something that gets people's attention as they're coming across. We do that at every place else in the county where people are Route 2 and 301 and Route 30 and, and Route 301, we have those signs, but probably something a little bit bigger than that just because of the size of the road and the size of the property. But if that would be okay, maybe we could have Mr. Wilson sit down with you and talk about what that would, what that would, what that endeavor would be and Mr. Wilson could come to us and actually talk about that. I think that starts to clear some of this up.
Sure, and I think if, I mean, if it works, we can mirror the design we already have, that we just approved today on the welcome sign in the gate one, which.
That'd be great.
The work's already done, so it's just a matter of getting prices on it.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mr. Forehand?
Hello, just a couple items. Mr. Fincham, just give me your, your for a second. Painted concrete block. That's about as. All right, it's just one step above. Oh, it's painted OSB.
Which number are you at?
18.
Yes.
Is there a way to, and what we have is amended, it's just stricken through, it's not, there isn't one that has any, any additional language, at least not that I've seen in this, unless, unless I go to the next section.
You're, you're correct. It, it, it does not speak to materials anymore.
Okay. I'm all right with the split block, but I, I have no, no love for regular CMU, you know, blocks painted anywhere and.
And I, I think that was one of the concerns early with the design is, for example, the maintenance of concrete, painted concrete block. It, it can become unsightly.
Yeah.
So I, I think you would need to address that issue with the applicant.
Okay.
As, as to clarifying that.
It's hard to dress up even when you paint it, it's still hard to dress up. But it's, anyway. And 19 is. I'm looking at, is it the pound requirement? That's the issue here? Or we're gonna, we're gonna put terracotta, terracotta on a roof somewhere?
I, I think they want the flexibility to do, you know, asphalt shingles, whatever kind of roofing materials, they want consistent with the construction of, of the building.
Okay. I, I'm all for the vast majority of these things. As, I do have some of the concern, a little concern with the, the removal of the, of the, the construction standards. I, I wanna, want them to support their business. I wanna take, take the, the, you know, throw the reins in horse terms. But I don't want something unsightly. And I know it's not now that we're, I'm not, not concerned about right now. I'm concerned about, once these are gone, they're gone forever.
Correct.
And 25 years from now, when there's a new management team or whatever, and they're throwing up concrete buildings with non-dimensional shingles that look like hammered poop and we can't do anything about it. And it's a, it's a showcase facility for the county. That's my concern and I, and I would.
Yeah.
That's my concern, so.
Okay, I think that would be a point.
With those items specifically.
Yes, I think that would be a point of discussion as the applicant in terms of, of modifying that language or clarifying that language to address your concerns.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Anybody else have any questions regarding item number three? How do, how does, I did, before we start discussing. How does the board wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for it if you, if you're all right with that.
I am, it's my district.
That I make a motion, we approve Commonwealth Fair as an event, AKA Virginia Farm Bureau and Holding Owner Applicant Meadow Event Park Application. Request to amend proppers associated with the Meadow Event Park.
So that is RZ?
RZ 04-2014.
Oh, no, RZ 01-2021.
Oh, I'm sorry, the top, yes, correct. Correct.
So there, there is a motion that we approve RZ 01-2021. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Black. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'll discuss, sorry, Mr. Forehand.
If we do this, there's no, there's no going back to discuss the items that I was just referring to. So if there, unless there's an urgency issue, I would like for us to hold off and address these two fairly minor provisions on 18 and 19. Just my request to the board.
From, from, from my pers, okay, I'll, but other members of the board speak.
I also still would like, even if it's a rewording of, of the advertising, I, this lady I'm confident about, but if a new employee comes in, I'm not, you know, we've been there before, we've seen what a change of management could do. I can see them saying, I don't have to put Caroline County in there, therefore I'm not going to put Caroline County in there. So I would like to at least reword for, say, even if it's something like advertise Caroline County on or in all materials promoting events wherever feasible or possible so that the gold is there to make sure people know it's not Hanover.
Can we, can we bang out what we need so that we're not leaving staff if everybody's, that's just my suggestion. I mean, if you wanna see something other than painted CMU or it's gotta be stuccoed CMU or something along those lines, because.
Well, regarding 18, if.
Okay.
What's that? Okay.
I do, on the advertising, I think it's worded now where applicable, which was my.
Not on mine.
Actually, in ours, it's just stricken completely.
I thought we had where applicable.
I think it was discussed at the planning commission, amending that language, but that did not get incorporated into the recommendation. So I think that's an easy fix.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me get back to that.
I don't like to prove something's not.
Instead of striking for, you would accept it and just at the end say where applicable.
Or feasible.
Or feasible. Now, that's still two general terms and it's subject to interpretation. I'm, I'm not sure that solves completely the issue, but it, it may frame it a little bit better.
Can we take, is there another word that makes it a little more interpretive and a little bit more, but I, I mean, it's, it's not much.
How about you say as agreed, as agreed.
Caroline County, in Caroline County.
I, I would simply put some reference as, as, as agreed to by the applicant or, because al, ultimately, it's gonna be, you're leaving it up as a negotiation. So unless you clarify exactly what that advertising is going to be.
Just pull it and leave it as it is then. Or wherever possible or. Or where agreed upon, since it says with input, I hate to have, or having to do back and forth phone calls with the economic department though.
That, that's not feasible because what we're, what we're talking about is, you're talking about all of the advertising for the state fair and we're in a social media world, you're dealing with Facebook, Facebook ads and some small images and even if we put it in there, it wouldn't, it's not gonna be productive for the county or really, it doesn't, the impressions just aren't there. I truly, I mean, I believe if we say where feasible and, and we continue to do what we're doing, doing right now and continue to carry it on all of our marketing materials and then when we look at the state fair, I mean, it's added to the front of our website, which because of the concert series has incredible traffic right now that we're accomplishing more than what.
Yeah, because I would think it would be on the webs on.
It is, it's on the front.
Because people have to know where to go.
My email signature, if, if I'm handling the marketing for all of, and right now I am, and every email I send out on behalf of our company and it's thousands, says Meadow Event Park in Caroline County. So we also do that now and that has added some exposure.
I just wanna make sure if you ever decide to retire, be it 20 years from now, 30 years from now, whatever. That the next person who follows behind you is as dedicated as you are to Meadow's Park.
And I, I understand we're talking about the future.
I will leave it up to staff to come up with that magical wording, but I do think we need to keep it in.
Mr. Thomas, I, I think the word, the wording where feasible would be acceptable to you and would be acceptable to the board. The reality is, this is the condition. So if you all of a sudden say it's not feasible to put Caroline on anything, the board would then have the opportunity to say, I don't believe she's complying with the condition and we could have her come back.
We have her come bring back.
So that's fair for.
That's, that's fine.
Both of them.
Yeah.
Right, it's our condition.
Right, huh? Well, if we take out the condition, don't we, we can't really say.
Right.
She didn't take it out, we just didn't get the final.
See, in this one, in this one.
I'm not, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that as feasible.
Right. Is there, is there different?
Yeah, mine are different.
Is there? If we change the construction standard.
Right, that's, we'll come back.
You can't go back to that. So I think we're finished with four as far as.
Right, now you wanted to make 19, correct?
18 and 19.
So, so Mr. Chairman, for my clarification, we're gonna keep the current condition four with a modification adding the language where feasible, correct?
That's fine, okay. All right, can we go on to 18 now, Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir, I just didn't wanna get lost. I apologize. It's, it's, I, I understand the, the issue to be painted.
No, just CMU blocks and, and, and the, and I missed a semicolon. Exterior building materials will include horizontal metal panels, masonry or precast concrete. Great, semicolon. And it says painted concrete blocks will not be used. And it already said no painted, but it's, it's saying, I'm all right with most other building, I don't want T-111 siding, I don't want vinyl siding on a big building, I don't want CMU blocks. You, you see where I'm going because they don't hold up, they look like crap after 20 years.
Right. How about we keep it, and this is a clarification. Exterior building materials, instead of saying will include, we say shall not include and specify the materials, vinyl siding, concrete block or painted concrete block. So we fill in the blanks with the concurrence of the applicant as to what you don't want to see.
And that's fine, I just don't wanna hold up the process. We wanna do it tonight and I don't wanna, in a hurry, you know, list out five things and it should have been four or six. You follow me? That's why I was just hoping to digest it for a little and have, have more discussion. But we wanna do it tonight, we can, we can do it.
I think there are, there are two things we're looking at. You have the front end and the back end and we, you know, what the public sees in all of the front structure is one thing and, and very much defined, but you know, if we had, if you go, if you were out of public view and you need a small storage building and, and we have, we have one there right now that was temporary kind of for the fair, but it probably does not comply with these materials because it was, it's used for storage and it's out of public view. So I think, I mean, I, this, this piece right here doesn't concern me as much, it was just part of the discussion about going through the process and.
The qualifier of public view is, is, is actually the gist of my, my concern. If it's, if it's in your maintenance area, I really don't care. If it's near the street, if it's near the existing buildings, if it's near the, the horse facility, you know, it's, that's different. You know, we, we want this to be a showcase facility and forever. Anyway, that's.
Does that sound fair to you, non-public view areas? Or, you know, there, there may be, may be a better way to grammatically say that, yeah? I never said I was a grammar guy.
I, I think, I mean, I think that could work because unfortunately, our operations area is too visible. I mean, and it doesn't look like we want it to look, but that could, that could work because what's visible publicly during the state fair, right, you know, footprint's not gonna change drastically. It would, it gives us a little flexibility on the back end.
Right, okay. Mr. Black, Mr. Black has a comment.
Mr. Fincham, is it possible, and to address Mr. Forehand's concerns, is it possible, like you put in a situation as agreed? Mr. Fincham, is it possible, and to address Mr. Forehand's concerns, is it possible, like you put in a situation as agreed upon, like in other words, the building materials as agreed upon by the county and then you can come back to it later on? And like, we can make a, we, we could come up with a list because it's really hard tonight to come up with a list of everything. Can you put a number eighteen that says the building materials as agreed upon by Meadow Event and Caroline County? So that way we can move forward with this, but at the same time go back to it and then have that agreement that we can put in a consent agenda, for example, at a later meeting? Is that possible?
Right.
Is doing something like that possible so you can move forward with it, but at the same?
A list of exterior building materials. We only come back to the conditions if they violate the condition. So if they build a building, then we'd come back to the conditions, but it's too late because the building is already built. That's a lot different than.
But if they came, what I'm saying is if we, if we said as agreed upon, and then we tonight pass it and then you do the agreed upon, then you'd have it, I mean, right away, you just say, you have a meet and say this is, is that possible, Mr. Fincham?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pending an idea now, in one second.
How about during the building permit process? The materials are, I mean, it's got to go to building anyways if you're going to, everything you build goes to building and planning.
Yeah, but they, what would they compare it against?
It, it's a building review process and, 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 and there is the.
Term of compliance.
Right.
Yeah, but they, they pull out this, these and look at it, say, oh, okay, you can do that.
Well, no.
Can I try?
Go ahead, Mr. Fincham, you're much better at this than me.
A list of exterior building materials visible to public view shall be prepared and agreed upon by the applicant and the county prior to the issuance of the first building permit.
Would. A building.
Well, the first building permit that comes in after this approval, yeah. With that.
Takes erudency off right now, and that's fine. Like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to tie your hands anymore. Satisfy, I guess, what I have in my head, that it could look like and on a bad way, but.
What, well.
Would it not be, you should just say at each building permit?
No.
No.
I, I don't think you want to negotiate each one, I think you should. If, if it's agreeable with the applicant, we come up with a list, even if she wanted to come up with building types.
Right.
We can tie the materials to the type. As, as an example, she said they've, they've got some buildings, some support buildings. Well, your, your standards for support building will be different than public active buildings.
So what, what hap, what needs to happen, or we had a motion and a second and discussion, but we need to amend the motion, then amend the second, then if we have additional discussion, we'll have that in the vote. So Mr. Sealy, I believe you made the motion.
Well, I just want to, one last clarification, that's going to wrap up eighteen and nineteen together in that statement, correct? That's the exterior building material. We.
Same language for nineteen, are you comfortable with that?
Or you can just combine them together.
Just combine them, the same thing. So, so there will be a, a motion that, that we need to amend.
Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion to the changes made by staff and the applicant to items four, eighteen and nineteen.
I'll second.
So there's a.
Okay, we can do another second, or Jeff could amend his second.
Okay, that works.
All right, so there's, there's a motion that we approve, are the zero one twenty, twenty-one with the amended language in the proper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. Let's go on to special exception zero one dash twenty twenty-one, Mr. Fincham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your next public hearing is SPX zero one dash twenty twenty-one. Commonwealth Fairs and Events, AKA Virginia Farm Bureau Holdings Corporation Incorporated, owner and Meadow Event Park applicant are requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article seventeen, Section thirteen and Article eleven, Division six, Section three of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. The requested amendments would be on the same parcels as were identified in the rezoning application. The subject property is located at thirteen thousand one ninety-one Dawn Boulevard, the Meadow Event Park in the Reedy Church Voting District. The proposed amendments would be to modify conditions with the previously approved special exception permit, including, but not limited to those related to fairground uses and operations, major entertainment uses specifically related to fireworks, laser light shows and concerts, and a campground and travel trailer park. These modifications would permit a more expansive use of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham, let me open up the public hearing if I can. Public hearing for a special exception zero one dash twenty twenty-one. Commonwealth Fairs and Events, AKA Virginia Farm Bureau Holding Corporation, owner Meadow Event Park applicant is now open. Anyone would like to speak regarding this matter?
Just briefly on that section, and I've already mentioned that the camping, public camping piece is of great importance. I am, you know, I, I think that most of the comments received negatively from our neighbors related to fireworks. And my only goal with that was just, I think that it's, it's in our best interest and, and the counties too. There are permit provisions in place that if I want to shoot fireworks during the fair or someone else wants to do it, there has to be a permit filed. And we have no plans right now to, to do that during the state fair or really right now at any other time. And the concert series piece was addressed back when we went through the festival permit process. There are no fireworks, aerial fireworks as part of the, the concert. So I think the goal with that section as well, part of it feels like it's duplication, but as they were updated over the years, it's basically just to get us into a better position to be able to make the choices to do what we need to do business-wise.
Thank you, Ms. Joll. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Finally, is there anyone who else would like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing none come forward, this public hearing is closed. Board, I wish you, how do you wish to proceed with special exception oh one dash twenty-one?
Mr. Chairman, if, if you'll allow, I'll, I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Let me, Mr. Fincham.
Oh, Mr. Fincham, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Members of the board, in its recommendation to the board, the planning commission recommended a modification to Section three, Condition five. And the proposed language that they recommended would be to amend Condition five in Section three to state pursuant to the Code of Caroline County, festival and or special event permits shall be required for any festival and or special event as set forth in the code. There were some discussions with public safety about notification requirements for, for certain size events. And I think all parties felt that, that that proposed modification would address the public safety concerns related to events that were not sponsored by Meadow Event Park.
Covers any event.
Yes, we, we would support the planning commission's recommendation that that modification be included.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fincham, Mr. Sealy.
When you say special event, what, did they put a number to the size of the special event?
No, we're actually going to have to come to the board with an amendment to the county code to address the special events provision, and we're working on that now.
How about for festivals, so a festival has no number on it either?
Currently, no. So I think what we would do is, is, is come to the board with wholesale changes to, to that sec, to that chapter.
And I guess my question, because they did this music festival, I mean, this, this whole series, concert series. And they came to us for that.
I, I think the number we've discussed internally is twenty-five hundred for a special events permit, at least at the state fair. But that's something that's still to be determined and decided by the board.
Because special event in the county is going to have different meanings, different places.
So the idea is that right now, this is governed by what was the safety committee and the recommendations that were developed for, for all these events. So you looked at staffing needs for a fire rescue or for EMS coverage, public safety coverage, et cetera, et cetera. And all that is dressed, addressed under the Meadow Event Park. By making some of these amendments, there still needs to be a mechanism in place for the county to say, we are regulating this size and type of event. So that's what this, this amendment would do. It would, it would, it acknowledges that we are going to create a special events permit along the lines of our music festival permit.
Is the applicant, I mean, has this been discussed? Okay, I'm just making sure we're not, because I was, I'm not opposed, I'm just looking at what the number would be.
Right, and, and, and I think staff concern was exposure to, to potential events that we didn't, that, that.
Have any knowledge.
We didn't have any knowledge of or ability to say, you need X number of EMS units, et cetera.
So, here, if I could ask, so are you saying that by adding that, everything would be dubbed under special permit and we're not needing to worry about two, three and, and four up at the top of the page? Or do we still need to do the major entertainment not included, uses not included? Or that's going to be now under special permit?
Hang on one second, Ms. Long, let me get there.
I'm sorry, I'm just finding, I'm just finding all these papers.
Yes, so, so the first three, we're getting rid of the limitation on fireworks. They're requesting that you, you eliminate the laser light shows. And they are requesting that you relieve them of the limitation of where our outdoor music festivals could be located. We would amend the Condition number five, which once we get rid of all the strike proofs will be Condition one in Section three to add the, the special events permit. So everything else under that section.
We're not opening everything up to have stages all over the place and music going twenty-four seven because everybody that falls to that category is going to be following a special permit? Or are we just saying we can put them any place, anytime, as many as you want? Are we going to do it all by special permit?
Anything not sponsored by Meadow Event Park would be subject to a, a festival permit. So you can look at the location of the stages with your festival permit.
But we don't have that say so over Meadow, Meadow Park.
You would not have a limitation on anything sponsored by Meadow Event Park.
And you know, I'm looking at strikes limitation on camping, you know, I'm going to look at that. So I, I don't mind how many times they have camping there, I just don't want it long-term camping, as I said before.
Nancy, no, I'm not going to.
But I know what you want, but I'm looking at what I'm reading, sure, and it's, it comes standing, what's on this piece of paper? So. Cause they wrote down on the papers that I have in my district too, yeah. So that's, I'm not trying to be difficult, really, I love Meadow's Park and they're doing a great job. But again, I'm thinking ten years down the road, just protect the county, Mr. Fincham, you know, and the people that live out that way. Because that's, that's all I'm asking. I remember we had a.
Any, any other comments?
Musical that wanted to come, like some years ago and it was a thing, yeah.
Any more discussion?
So I, so really what we've changed is Section three, number five. And we've changed that to festival slash special events.
Yes, sir.
Permit shall be required for any music, and it should be any festival slash special event.
Yes, I.
Not sponsored by Meadow Event.
Yeah.
So we can say not sponsored by Meadow Event. Go ahead. Let me, let me make sure.
So I think part of our discussion and with Chief Loftus was the proffers restricted what we did as Meadow Event Park. So planning the state fair and, and how we operated and created events. All of the restrictions that I asked, you know, that I wanted opened up really were pointed at us. In my discussions with Chief Loftus, he said, would you agree to file a special event permit for the state fair of Virginia? So if we get rid of these restrictions that really were only for like our fair event and our, what now is our farm festival, basically we would do the same thing as a promoter and I'm fine with that because I actually, I think it's a great way to tell the county what we're doing on an annual basis. So we actually don't, we're included in filing.
So I don't need, except the Meadow Event? Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just making sure that we've covered all the bases on this. So with, with the change in Section three, number five, which you've got recorded, right, Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir.
Festivals and, and special events, I'll make a motion that we approve as presented with that change, SPX oh one twenty twenty-one, to amend the conditions approved with, approved with special exception oh three twenty fourteen for the Meadow Event Park.
Is there a second? All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we approved special exception zero one dash twenty twenty-one with the amendment.
And with the planning commission, and that includes the planning commission's recommendation for, for the special.
That's, that's what I included in Section, in, in Section three, number five, was the planning commission change. Is that correct, Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was, I wanted to make sure we captured that in its entirety.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Ayes have it, thank you, Mr. Fincham. Next on the agenda is item number five. Is a, under new businesses, a proposed resolution to educate Caroline County residents and the medical community on the risk of traveling to China for organ transplants in light of the reports of state-sponsored organ harvesting from prisoners' conscience. If you remember our last meeting, we, we had some information that was presented to us in a red folder and I got a chance to read it. Also had a chance to speak to several other members and they asked to come back and for us to put the resolution together. Many of the counties in Northern Virginia have, have adopted the resolution. And I graciously said I'd like for them to come and do a short five-minute presentation to the board on the issue before the Chinese people as well as the.
the Chinese people as well as the humanitarian issue that's plaguing those these people. But with the board's indulgence, I'll ask them to come forward, please, and do the presentation. It's really about five, seven minutes.
Good evening. My name is Taney Tang. I would like to thank the board for considering a resolution addressing state-sponsored organ harvesting in Communist China. During our comments at last month's meeting, we mentioned that Falun Gong practitioners are the primary targets of forced organ harvesting in China. Falun Gong is a spiritual practice based on the principles of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. Why has the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, targeted them for organ harvesting? This five minutes video can help to explain.
You have the video for it? It's on the flash drive?
Health bills were decreasing, crime rates were falling, and morality was rising. So why were these people targeted for elimination and organ harvesting? Mona Yu was one of the millions meditating in parks every day.
There was a park across the street from my house. Because the first exercise site couldn't hold so many people anymore, it divided into the second, the third, the fourth. So at every street corner and in every park, you could see people practicing Falun Gong.
There was a different kind in society, it was many policemen and military.
It was just fundamental part of society at that time, and everybody knew somebody who practiced.
Falun Gong is a traditional practice of self cultivation, a practice of slow moving exercises, meditation, and studying of the principles of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance, and trying to adopt those into your life.
While morning exercises had always been popular in China, Falun Gong brought more than just health benefits. For thousands of years, the Chinese people have believed in Buddha's and Tao's and becoming an immortal. Falun Gong really dared to talk about these things, and immediately people took it to heart. Oh, the true ancient good things of China have come back. However, after fifty years of political campaigns to destroy traditional beliefs, any revival of spirituality was seen as a threat to communist rule. Since I was eleven, I experienced all of the Chinese Communist Party's campaigns. After group of good people were targeted. There was no faith, no Falun Gong stood in stark contrast with communist ideology. And so it would be very hard for it to be tolerated by the CCP. With more practitioners than members in the Communist Party, the party chief, Jiang Zemin, saw it as a threat to his power and overruled the government's support of Falun Gong.
Jiang Zemin issued an order, set up special office called Sixth Hen Office in charge of nationwide campaign persecution.
Known as China's Gestapo, the Sixth Hen Agency was above the law and could use any and all means necessary to achieve its sole mission, to eliminate Falun Gong. The nationwide campaign began July nineteen ninety-nine.
You'd have mass book burnings organized by the party, steamrollers going over Falun Gong cassette tapes and CDs.
Essentially, it's a process of demonizing and dehumanizing, you know, incessant propaganda.
With millions of practitioners in detention, one of the worst crimes in history began taking place in hospitals throughout the country as organ transplants suddenly began to skyrocket.
We've been asked to investigate allegations that there has been harvesting of organs of Falun Gong in China. Our bottom line conclusion, after considering everything as best we could, was that the allegations are true.
I began conducting comprehensive interviews with medical professionals, Chinese law enforcement personnel, and over fifty refugees from the law guy system, but I estimate that sixty-five thousand Falun Gong were murdered for their organs from two thousand to two thousand and eight.
Essentially, what organ harvesting means is they're taking Falun Gong practitioners literally like cattle holding in prison camps, testing their blood and other vital organs. And when someone comes into the country that needs a heart, a liver, kidney, they find a match. They take the Falun Gong practitioner, extract their organs, of course, killing them in the process. It is literally life and death for many in the upper echelon of the party members that run China to not let Falun Gong story be told.
Falun Gong has been exemplary in its response. It has never dealt with violence in a violent way. It's always responded with forbearance, with love, with truth, with patience, and ultimately, that's going to prevail.
Thanks. Yep. Standing with me is Chen Yan Wang, a Virginia resident and a survivor of the CCP's persecution. The police in China killed her husband for protecting her. She spent seven years in prison for telling people about Falun Gong. She was fortunate to escape China with her life. More than twenty of her friends who were also practitioners were tortured to death. During her imprisonment, Miss Wang was forced to do slave labor for up to eighteen hours a day. One of the items she made was jackets like the ones she is holding. She was forced to make hundreds of these, most of them exported to Europe and America. Miss Wang was also blood tested while she was in prison. This is one of the tests used to determine organ compatibility. In other words, the Chinese government considered her not only a slave, but also a potential organ donor. Why? Just because she is a Falun Gong practitioner. You may be wondering, why you have not heard more about the horrors of forced organ harvesting in China? This is primarily due to the Chinese government's extensive influence operations over media companies throughout the world, and it's a tight control over the flow of information going into and coming out of China. For example, have you ever seen the special insert called China Watch? That is included in the Wall Street Journal and the Washington Post. This section is writing by the CCP, which pays millions of dollars to these news, these two newspapers to feed Chinese government propaganda to US policymakers and business leaders under the guise of news reporting. In response of the issue of forced organ harvesting in China, a total of eleven counties in Virginia recently passed resolutions to educate their residents about the practice. If a terminally ill resident goes to China for a transplant, this could very possibly result in the deaths of Falun Gong practitioners. Your action today will help prevent the citizens of Caroline County from becoming the unwitting accomplices to the murder of innocent people. It will also help educate our citizens about the atrocities committed by the communist regime in China. If this is how they treat their own citizens, how should we expect them to treat the rest of the world? Thank you very much for your kind attention. We invite any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for shining a light on an issue that I know I had not paid very much attention to until you brought it to our attention. So I certainly thank you, and so it's it's certainly disturbing, I can tell you that, that we're persecuting people and harvesting their organs. It's a, it's just a tragedy. In the board packet, I've given a We have a resolution. Are you ready for a motion to adopt the resolution? Yes, I'm I would I would make the motion that we adopt the resolution in in support of the folks that have been here before and are here again to shine a light on on the tragic events that are happening in China regarding organ harvest.
Second.
There's a motion and proper second that we adopt a resolution regarding the harvesting of Fungu prisoners. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you. Jie xie.
不客气.
Next on the agenda, this discussion of regarding the policy for use of end of year funds. I believe that's Mr. Cully.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the chair had requested that we have a discussion about all departments and the end of year money. Currently, the way the county handles it is that the only set department that we return funds to is the capital reserve and fire and rescue. Every other department submits a list of projects that are ongoing capital type projects that they haven't completed, and the board normally rolls that into the next year. You remember, we normally do that in September sometime and roll, you know, if the planning department was working on a project and it wasn't finished, you know, with a contractor or that type of thing, we've rolled those things. Most of that money is usually in public works and public utilities where projects kind of cross budget years. But other than that, there's no standard policy for the library or economic development or finance or my department for end of year savings to go anywhere, it just rolls back into the general fund.
I think last week I sent, I think Pam or maybe Mr. Cully sent out the origination of the policy, how it came about in the discussion. But I wanted to make sure we were all educated on the policy as it is written. So because certainly I had a a different interpretation of the the policy myself. But I wanted to make sure that everyone had the policy and read the policy as it stands regarding a year-end fund. That's the law, it, that is the law.
Yeah, it all runs back to the general fund.
Right. I just wanted everyone to read that from, I think it's from nineteen ninety-seven, actually, it's from the minutes that were sent to me, I believe.
Correct.
And the rationale.
You know, at this point in time, I I know we're we're closing in on the year end, you know, we're we're to May tenth, June thirtieth is around the corner. And with we have an interesting year, next two years coming in that there's a a lot of federal funds flowing to everybody. So I think we, you know, as as we look at all of the expenditures that we've had and all the I do believe that some of these federal funds are going to enable some cap, a lot of capital projects.
Correct, correct.
And I think this is an interesting opportunity for the board as a whole to actually gather a general, to actually get a fund balance that will keep us healthy. And I I think we need to take this opportunity to make it a true rainy day fund because I do believe that at the end of this, as we're watching gas prices and diesel fuel prices today went up thirty or forty cents. I don't believe that's coming back down. I think what we're seeing is a result of where where things are being driven. We've all seen lumber prices, I don't know how much public utility, some public works uses lumber, but I think lumber is the tip of the iceberg. I think chemical prices and everything else that we see. I think if Mr. Shebule were to tell us what his chemical prices for the water and the wastewater treatment plant have done in the last two or three years, the report today would be a baseline, and then if we asked him a year from now where that would be, it's going to be significantly higher. I know that I talked to several farmers over the last couple of weeks. For those that haven't noticed, corns, it's over seven dollars a bushel. I helped farm two thousand acres as a as a as a kid. We were always praying for two sixty-five, two seventy-five corn, usually got two thirty-five a bushel. When you look at that price today and yields in the fields have gone up, and you're at seven twenty-five, wheat's seven sixty-eight, soybeans are heading towards seventeen dollars, everything that we touch has corn and soybeans in. So we can't help but say that the price of everything that we're going to use or provide in the county isn't going to go up. I I think we need to take this time to really look hard and build a true rainy day fund for events after the federal funds that we're all going to have to spend. Those those are my thoughts, and I think that yeah, the policy is a policy, we can always revisit anything that we get, there's always an opportunity to visit that as a board, depending on projects, but I think we need to to be mindful, we heard from our bond council. And we need to, we need to be very mindful of what we're faced with. Not probably next year, because capital projects, we're going to have funds to do that, but in the future, we're going to have to be ready for when those funds stop and where that baseline is going to be for everything that's happening. Because we're going to face it, whether it's products we buy, landfill, cost of doing business in general, whether it's mailing, I mean, commissioner revenue treasurer's office, sheriff's office, those costs are also all going to go up, and we're going to have to be mindful of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. You both have any comment? My my comment is that when I looked at the CARES funding email that was sent, I mean, email from the US Treasury that was sent out yesterday talking about what we could spend some of the funds for what caught my eye was said water sewer and broadband. And there's would give us some negotiating power, I think, with broadband and give us an opportunity to strengthen up those services that are critical to our expansion. So I just wanted to make sure that we're then that we're looking at it, we're on top of it, that we're making sure that, you know, that the information that's being put out there because, you know, we put the six fourteen out of the general fund, or do we take out of CARES for the daddy?
We took that out of CARES.
We took out of CARES money. So as we we lucked out, yeah, so as we continue to move forward with expanding broadband, for example, there may be an opportunity there to use some of that daddy money, I mean, from the the new CARES money that won't impact so in our general fund.
There's another pot of state money that's how many? Ten billion? And how much is the state of Virginia getting? A hundred million to the state. A hundred million to the state. It's a separate broadband pot of money that we'll also try to go after.
That's not federal money, though.
No, it's federal money.
It's federal money.
Federal money come to the state.
Federal money.
Not coming to Caroline, coming to the state, just for broadband. Hundred million.
It's in the memo, I think. Yeah. Among the entire state.
Correct, a hundred million.
To the state, though.
But if everybody matches the hundred million that gifted, that's two hundred million.
We had twenty-five million for the VATTI grant.
Right.
And it went up to fifty.
Right.
It's, don't think, I don't believe a hundred million is a lot of money. But it's not a lot of money for all what we have to do for that entire state.
Right. But if everybody matches that, that makes two hundred million available. If there's a fifty percent match.
Okay, one more time. The fact that a hundred million dollars is divided among the whole state, we got one point something million in the VATTI grant? Yeah. So. Put in six. Yeah, we were one out of ten. The point is, it's not a lot of money. It's not a lot of money. It's a good thing to have. I'm not saying no, it's a slice of bread. It's not a whole load. Moving in the right direction. That's all I'm saying. I'm not going to get carried away. What we need is, we need to do our very best to get every household in the county broadband, get somewhat internet so that we can be prepared. Yeah, that's the goal. That's the goal. But don't think I'm happy. Don't think I'm happy because I got a diamond. No, we don't want you to be happy. We just want you to be glad that you got the dime. And hopefully more to come. That's the beginning, not the end. So that's.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes, sir.
I did get an email this afternoon about a seminar that you've got to register for that's supposed to talk about how we can use all this new money. And if you didn't get it, Mr. Cully, I'll send it to you and you can check it out and see who's giving it if it's something you think we all should watch.
That's the one from the Treasury, right? Came in yesterday from the US Treasury.
That's the one you've got.
Right.
Tamika's our lead on the.
Right, those two, two seconds. On how it could be spent. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cully. You might as well stay there. Any more questions regarding agenda item number eight? Proposed replacement of the boiler in the administrative building. Oh, Mr. Sheba, I'm sorry.
Can I just make a motion? Should we do it?
Let's say, as bad as it's been last winter in there, and I was there a couple of days when it was cold.
Well, the current boiler's sort of been broken and they're piecing it together. But with the building expansion, and I'd been after a second redundant boiler for a number of years anyway, but with the building expansion, we don't really have enough capacity. But you can go over to the extra detail. But we've known we've had a problem, but it's kind of.
Mr. Sheba, I don't think you need to say very much. Great, great presentation, Mr. Sheba.
All right, wonderful.
Nancy, Nancy, you want to make a?
Mr. Chairman, that we approved funds for replacement of the boiler in the administration building.
There's a motion that we replace the appropriate money for the replacement of the boiler in the administrative building. Is there a second?
I did.
All right. Second by Mr. Thomas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Is that what you needed, Mr. Sheba?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. We didn't put a dollar limit on it?
Well, it's in the, it's actually in the, it's actually in the.
In the packet.
Does that give us any redundancy, Mr. Cully?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Cully, you want to give us a capital projects update? And calendar, calendar items?
The status cap projects is in your packet. I don't think there's a whole lot of things that have changed in the last month. We still pretty much, in COVID, where we don't have a whole lot of meetings, our next regular meeting is at six PM on the twenty-fifth of May. The offices will be closed on Memorial Day, which is the thirty-first. Our June meeting is scheduled for June the eighth at six PM. And then we'll be closed for the state holiday on June eighteenth, Juneteenth. And that's the new state holiday. So that's pretty much it for the rest of May and June calendars.
Mr. Thomas? Cully, kind of a capital project question. Did we receive the money from our financing that we did already?
Yes, yeah, that all closed.
That's all closed?
That's all closed, yes.
We got the money?
We got the money.
All right, what's the status of Carmel Church Fire Station now? Is it done yet?
It's in, it's in, I mean, there's a design. We've been working on the design. We have found, and you're going to love this, we've been working on this. But construction costs since we came to you with that project have gone up substantially, steel prices and overall construction. But we're working on trying to get the design straight.
Yes, Mr. Cully added to the agenda. I just saw an email from Dr. Calverick regarding high school graduation on Friday, the twenty-first. That's not on our calendar.
That email says there, it's a ticket for the chair and the vice chair. Due to COVID restrictions, they don't have tickets for the whole board. So just for the chair and vice chair. And whenever, in the email, the date is. Yeah, we family add that to the calendar. We just got that since we were in the meeting.
Right, I just looked at my watch. Mr. Sheba?
Yes, sir. Briefly, the Carmel Church Fire Station project. We've already issued test contracts that the board have approved for the architectural services as well as all the engineering site plans layout. Ted Lamer's been doing a wonderful job and came up with a layout for the facility. We're probably in our twenty-fifth revision of that and been working back and forth with the chief over several meetings. We had a kickoff meeting last week with the engineer slash architect to review all that and then to kind of lay, get the layout. So within the next two weeks, we're supposed to have another meeting and laying the building out on the actual property so that we can start the permitting process and starting to negotiate and talk with VDOT about what that's going to require. So we've got about four months that it's going to take to design the entire building and get everything laid out and hopefully get all the permits in place.
Plus the stormwater management?
Yes. Yeah, so then we will be back to the board, get an authorization to go out to bid on that as soon as we get everything together and are ready to move forward with that. Ninety-day construction, huh?
Thank you, Mr.
Ninety-day construction, huh? That all depends on how much we can, how fast we can get materials.
Thank you, Mr. Sheba.
Hey, that's a capital project.
I know.
So I get to ask questions.
I know, but I don't think he's going to know if he's going to be here to do the ninety days or not.
I'm just trying to give him some incentive. To help people along. Don't you understand how this works?
I do, but.
To help them along.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a motion on a closed session.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sealy.
Mr. Chairman, coming out of closed session, I have a motion that I'd like to make that the board of supervisors is going to allow a residency movement of the county administrator to the adjoining locality of Hanover, Virginia due to a family emergency effective one May.
Second.
So there's a motion to allow residency move for the county.
County, Mr. Cully.
County administrator. There's the proper second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Closing, no, closing board comments, Mr. Forehand.
When I saw the information on the organ harvesting, I'd read something about this several years ago and I was actually surprised that more people didn't know about it. It's been going on for many years, as the video showed. It's in line with many other things that have happened in the country. And the less we align ourselves with that government, the better off we will be as a country. And the hard lesson to learn. And I wish more people would learn it quickly before we get too far down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand, Mr. Black.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Forehand said. And actually, the school superintendent and some of the school board members are behind you. And that would be something that would definitely needs, I think, get out sometimes to the students that are, you know, learning government and history and world affairs. Because I think they need to hear it just as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black, Mrs. Sealy.
I would just like to thank the ladies for making the long trip from Northern Virginia to here and then waiting patiently this evening as we waited through the rest of the agenda. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for the awareness you brought us all.
Mrs. Long? Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I'd like to say that I spoke to Mrs. Tang before and I told her, I'm not sure how it happened, but I am on an email list with the friends of Falun Gong. So I'd been aware of that. I, you know, made sure she did that. Glad the board was able to pass that resolution. I think it's a good thing. And the last thing is, Mr. Sheba, it's only going to take ninety days, right?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I too am grateful for the ladies coming, staying in contact, constantly calling me about this issue. I was glad that we were able to get it on the agenda. I'm glad that we were able to pass the resolution. I think it just speaks volumes to who we are as a country and many of the things that we have to be grateful for in terms of the freedoms that sometimes we take for granted. And there's sometimes some of those little things that I take for granted, they are quite precious. And today's ceremony is a reminder of those people who are out there really giving it their all to make sure that we are safe and secure in our homes and our environments. And this is just another opportunity for us to say that the world is better and can be better than it is, and it's up to us to make it that way. So, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Some who? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Ninety days, Mr. Sheba.